The interests of real estate developers and landlords have dominated New York City politics for decades. Instead of choosing the people, the city has chosen the billionaires.
I'm very proud of our working conditions.
Whether you're one of the million New Yorkers facing eviction, a small business owner struggling to keep your doors open, a victim of police violence, or a worker who hasn't seen a raise in years, the political establishment has placed this burden on your shoulders and mine. As a teenager, the Great Recession left me homeless. I was arrested because I had nowhere to go. It taught me that our society doesn't prioritize working class people, but I've seen what happens when working class people come together. When we fight, we win. When Jeff Bezos was stealing sickly from me and my coworkers at the Amazon warehouse in Queens, I co-founded Amazonians United NYC to take our rights back. We stopped big business from stealing tax dollars from hardworking New Yorkers, preventing further gentrification in the process. And just this last week, we introduced groundbreaking legislation that will create a real system of police accountability, the first of its kind in the nation. And before that, I was on the campaign trail for the biggest upset in Queens' political history. They said we couldn't win, but we did. But the last year has shown everyone that there is more progress to be made. So we'll fight for rent relief, mortgage relief, and Nisha resident power. We'll keep fighting for police accountability and develop a new system for community safety. We'll fight for the workers who keep our city going. That's why I'm running for New York City Council, because it's time for us to plug people power into politics. Not real estate power, not corporate power, not police power, people power. Because when there's a job to be done, working people know how to do it. Let's keep making progress.
We have a special guest that's gonna bring the fire today here on Fire Breathing Rob. He's a true socialist in New York, in the fight for Amazon with Amazonians United. This is Jonathan Bailey. He is running for Queens, in Queens 26 rather, for City Council. So first of all, Jonathan, thanks so much for running and really spending, selling rather, that message that we need right now in this country in Queens 26 for City Council. Jonathan Bailey, thanks again. Alright, so Jonathan, let's kick this around here. So first, before we even get into what you're about, what made you want to run for this office? Was there something that you were seeing in the community? I mean, when I think of New York City, or any city for that matter in this country, you know, you think of the gentrification, you think of the police brutality, you think of, you know, the minimum wage. You think of Amazon right now, because there's a huge fight, and you'll go into that in the interview in just a minute, with the Amazon to try to fight again. They're fighting against you guys, because you guys want a union. So a lot of things going on right now in New York, but what was one of those things that you saw and said, hey, I need to run? Because if I don't run, no one's gonna run with these kind of values and get anything done.
Yeah, um, so like for me, um, like there's all those issues, of course. Um, and like I see all those issues, um, but in order to like, uh, like, my like motivation specifically for running are like, are, I guess, uh, it's, it's kind of adjacent to all of those. Like I'm involved like very deeply with, uh, issues of like Black liberation, police accountability, community safety. Um, I'm like obviously involved with like a lot of labor issue stuff. Um, and I've, I've, uh, I've like also been involved with like a lot of housing fights. Um, but the reason for me for running, uh, for City Council is because there's certain ways in which our electoral endeavors, like within movement politics, uh, relate to movements and like political struggles outside of government that I felt aren't quite situated right for us to win. Um, yeah, people are constantly like, you know, they'll fight to get somebody in, into office, and then they'll be frustrated because like they don't necessarily follow through. Or maybe they like, you know, they're like pushing, but they're not like fighting in the way that folks want them to, right? Um, and so like, in thinking about that, I've like really been trying to pick apart, okay, how do we build our power in a different way such that we can make the progress that we want to see? Um, and a lot of that has to do with, uh, like building the type of working class power outside of government that's necessary to hold, uh, movement candidates accountable, right? Um, having like, uh, like the body of activists and body of community leaders, uh, that have their like political sentiment like concentrated, collectivized in such a way that when we put somebody in office, they have to do, they have to follow through with the things that, that they have committed to do. Because, um, we actually have power that sits outside of government that is sufficient to hold them accountable. Um, so for me, I just realized that, you know, this is like a great time and it is a great situation. Um, I'm ex Ocasio 2018 alum. Uh, there actually hasn't been any candidate that has like, uh, uh, like, you know, any like, yeah, actually any candidate that has been endorsed by as many members of that team's leadership uh, as our campaign. And, um, uh, you know, there's a lot of public housing within the district that I've been like really engaged in fighting for as an executive committee member of Justice for All Coalition, which that sounds like a job, but it's not. It's like more volunteer stuff. Um, with it being the, the district that Amazon HG2 was going to come into, and I was just really involved with that fight, I realized, okay, um, there's just a lot of different fights that, um, I've been involved with here that it made sense to, to run for this, this City Council district. And, oh, and of course, like, you know, the largest Black liberation protest, you know, within our lifetime has just been recently, and I've been really involved with, uh, the fight for police accountability and moving to alternative forms of community safety. So, um, I don't know, there's just like a lot of reasons.
No, I appreciate you doing everything you do. We need more people like you in this country in general. If we did, it would be a hell of a better place than it is. Right now, it's a disaster. Uh, regardless, if you put Joe Biden or Donald Trump, we're getting the same results, unfortunately. Uh, but besides the point, we did see, you know, this, these protests all over the country again, uh, for George Floyd and the murder of George Floyd. I know we're going through the trial now with Derek Chauvin. Uh, regardless of that, we saw these people, young people, old people, black, white, Latino, Asian, Native American people come out in protest against police brutality. Do you feel like if we had those type of protests, those type of marches for unionization, for workers' rights, for a $15, or even really, it should be $25 minimum wage in some places such as New York City, where the cost of living is extremely higher than someplace like Florida? But regardless of that, if we had those, that type of backing like they did this summer for workers' rights, union rights, um, you know, Martin Luther King talked about this too, uh, Jobs for All. We've seen Bernie Sanders AOC run on these platforms too. So do you believe that would make a huge change in this country? And my thing is, why isn't there a general strike in this country? We saw all this stuff this summer. Why not have a general strike? I, I just, it boggles my mind when we saw all this action this summer. Why not do this next?
Well, yeah, I totally agree. I mean, a general strike would be dope. I, I like, that's, that's, uh, I mean, I mean, that's, that's, that's the dream, right? Um, so the thing is though, we don't have, uh, we don't have the political sentiment organized in order to actually make that kind of thing happen. Uh, like frankly, we're not anywhere close right now, um, which is unfortunate. Um, uh, and a lot of that has to do with the fact that like, um, you know, we haven't come, we, we haven't done much to combine, uh, like Black liberation struggle, uh, with like, you know, it's like a labor, it's labor equivalence, right? You know? Um, instead of like focusing on, uh, like the working places of colonized peoples, which would actually, uh, do more to combine, uh, both like struggles against police violence, some of the, these things that are like highly motivating to people to like fight for, you know? Because they're not attached in any like significant way into like, uh, like a working class organization. What happens is that we have these eruptions of political sentiment that then, uh, like fizzles out. They, they, they like, you know, they don't have the, they're not being reaped into new, uh, institutions for the working class, right? Like we, we're not coming out of these protests this past summer with new institutions capable of fighting, uh, police violence. And because of that, of course, like, there's no sustaining power, right? And so for me, like, a lot of what I am also doing with Amazonians United, uh, is recognizing that Amazon warehouses are one of the, one of the places that our society puts black people, right? It's one of the places that our society puts us. And, um, when we build organization within, uh, within workplaces where, uh, like black and brown people are placed, when they're fighting institutions that actually help us, uh, hold and wield political sentiment that allows us to fight for changes of our like material conditions, our, our wages, um, they also can be institutions that allow us to fight against police violence. For instance, uh, you know, half of my warehouse like went out in protest last summer. Um, and we were able to support, uh, that a little bit as Amazonians United. But a robust workers' movement that we have to still build will be one that focuses on the workplaces of colonized people and, uh, facilitates, uh, political engagement like through those institutions, right? Um, it's gonna be through that that we have the types of strong, uh, durable, sustainable working class institutions that allow us to not only fight for better conditions in our workplaces, but also to fight against police violence, to fight against, uh, environmental racism, to fight against all of these like political struggles that affect our, our communities, um, outside of the workplace. Um, so like for me, that, that's the real goal. We gotta get there. And when we get there, that's when we'll start to see things like general strikes.
I do want to ask you this about Amazon. We saw that big unionization drive in Bessemer, Alabama. There were some wins, and, and you actually talked to me off air about this, about the wins for worker paid time off, which was a huge win for Amazonians. Obviously, we know that, uh, through, uh, Amazon workers and Bernie Sanders, the $15 minimum wage was good. That was passed for Amazon, but there was a lot of strings and different things that got taken away, uh, because of the $15. So it wasn't so exciting as it could have been. Uh, but anyways, regardless of that, we know there's a fight now in, um, in New York, where you're involved in this fight, uh, with the Amazonians United to try to get that unionization. It's a little bit different in New York than it's gonna be in Alabama, because Alabama only had 8% of the state unionized, where New York has one of the highest unionizations in the country, at 22% of their state, unionized. And obviously, it's a progressive state. It's a little bit different. So, you know, first of all, you guys know the tactics that these guys are gonna play and throw at you guys. They're gonna throw everything against the wall and see what sticks and really push hard. They do not want this to happen. Because if it happens in New York, it's gonna happen all over the country, and it's gonna screw up their money game and Jeff Bezos' space game. Regardless, go ahead.
I would say like, like honestly, a lot of people do not realize the level that Amazon is, is playing at, um, when it comes to like, like, the way that Amazon understands, uh, how labor relations should be. Um, so for instance, when, after, after one of our walkouts, uh, when I was interviewed, uh, by management, it wasn't just management. I was interviewed by an ex FBI officer, right? Um, yeah, like, uh, like Amazon actually like regularly hires ex-military, ex-police, ex-FBI. Uh, Amazon recently hired the NSA chief that oversaw Edward Snowden, like, you know, to like track, to spy, to like monitor all of our operations and movements. Um, and like, you know, to do things like interrogate, uh, interrogate employees, like, like what, what happened with me? You know, when I was, after I walked out, you know, I was interrogated by an ex FBI officer for an hour and a half, which is, like, which is crazy, but like, it's not crazy when you're, when you're thinking about like the, um, when you're thinking about the United States' history of labor relations, it's not crazy. Um, you know, like since, uh, since the time of slavery, we've always, uh, relied on this like private, uh, public partnership of like, you know, uh, military training, uh, being also used to drive, uh, um, like black labor within this, this country. Like, it's been an important foundational part of our labor relations. Um, so like, when you think of that, and like, when you think of things in that context, you know? When I, I think of my, uh, great grandparents who worked on the plantation that, uh, like my ancestors were in slavery on, uh, under Jim Crow and had like the same labor relations. And then eventually coming to like thinking about like the labor relations of, of my workplace, you know, where we're, we're like, you know, predominantly black labor is driven by like, you know, these various, uh, actors that, that used to exist within the state, you know? I like, it all makes sense. It just, it's just kind of about how, uh, labor relations has always been here. And, you know, the, the recipe for like fighting has always still been the same. Like getting people to gather together, uh, to fight within the workplace, to engage in shop floor actions, uh, to exercise power against the boss. Um, and when we do that, when we, when we fight that way, we, we win. Like, it's, it's simple as that. Like, if you can cost, uh, the boss a million dollars, you can ask for 500,000 easy, you know? Um, but you have to have, you have to have, you have to have built that power, uh, in order to like, in order to get those wins. So, um, you know, that's what is kind of foundational to our understanding of, of, uh, both, uh, labor struggle in the workplace and political struggle, uh, outside of it. You know, that's what Amazonians United is about. We fight, uh, the fight of anti-colonialism, uh, in every space in which we exist.
Right, so Jonathan, how is the morale then working? Because they're tracking every move you make, they're watching you, we're watching every move you make on cameras. Uh, how is that morale with supervisors there? Because, uh, you know, especially with the union fight now, I know all their ploys, that they put the signs everywhere. I know in Bessemer, they were changing the stoplight. They were doing all kinds of stunts. So how is the morale?
Well, the morale is, uh, you know, it's, it's complex, right? You know, um, it's, it's challenging, um, you know, it's Amazon. Um, but the thing is like, when, like, there's no experience. There's no experience like coming together with your coworkers and fighting for change and like experiencing like, experiencing that solidarity. Um, experiencing like living through solidarity. Like, it changes your relationships with everyone around you, and honestly, like, it makes just life better in general.
Do any of the supervisors like kind of say, hey, I'm with you, but like I can't say I'm with you? Or are they all basically with the program?
Well, here's the thing, like, I mean, regardless of what their sentiments are, like, they're, they're, like, they have conflicted class interests, right? Um, like they have, uh, like, realize, um, you know, management is paid to drive, uh, the labor, to make sure that, uh, Amazon is extracting as much labor out of us as possible for, uh, the smallest price possible. Um, it's their job, like, you know? And so whether they support us or not, it, it's, it's directly in conflict with what they are paid to do. Um, so, uh, you know, we've had like, uh, managers promise like, hey, if you were to like, if you were to like, like protest, I would be right there with you. And like, we've had them bail when it comes time. And like, I mean, I don't rely on managers. I don't, I don't, like, I'm, I'm not, like, even if I like a manager, even if I like kind of, I mean, I've had managers who I'm like, I really want to be friends with you, but like ultimately, like their interests, uh, run counter to like, you know, to ours. Um, and it, it's kind of wild, because they would actually make more money if they just like, like, if they enabled us to like protest, right? And so that we're making more money, they would have to be paid more money in order to like, you know, be managers. Like, it would actually be to their best interest. But in the middle of the fight, during that fight, it's not within their interest to like, to support us, right? It shows as like bad management if, uh, workers are, are revolting, right? Um, if workers in other places aren't revolting, what's wrong with you as a manager that your workers are, uh, revolting? So like, I mean, it, it's important for us to recognize, even if like they're sick of Amazon, even if they, they want to say like, hey, I'm gonna go on strike with you. Like ultimately, their, their class interests are kind of skewed, you know? It, it's, it's conflicted.
They also could be spying too.
Oh yeah, Amazon has spies, you know? Um, the, the Global Security Operations, which is the group, uh, like, you know, that, um, you know, that, that like, that a lot of the ex like military and spy agency and like, uh, you know, police, ex-police officers are like a part of, you know? They're integrated into this, uh, large network called Global Security Operations. And yeah, they're like, you know, their job is to spy on workers, you know? And like, you know, like, we've had people like report all over, uh, that like, you know, of like odd behavior from, uh, uh, from like, you know, workers where they felt it was just kind of odd or weird. And so like, you know, like, I mean, Amazon's not supposed to do that stuff, but it does, you know? Like, I, I mean, I don't, I don't think for one, one second that Amazon is like above like breaking laws to, uh, I, I mean, I know for a fact that Amazon is willing to violate laws in order to extract more value out of us. They have already here in, in my warehouse. And, um, it wasn't until we as workers, uh, forcibly held them accountable that anything changed. So, you know, uh, it's totally like, of, of course, like, I wouldn't be surprised at all if Amazon's also like engaging in like widespread, uh, workers' rights violations, especially with like, I mean, you know, I, as some of the folks might know, um, you know, I had an MLRB case that was like recognized as, uh, Amazon violating our labor rights. I mean, what do you think a company that's like willing to, um, that's willing to like hire vast amounts of, uh, ex-military and like spy agency employees, uh, to turn it as like, as anti-union, uh, uh, you know, systems within the company? Of course, they're, they're doing all sorts of crazy, like unethical things, you know? Um, but, but in a nutshell, like, when we're organized, when we're organized to fight, we can win. It comes down to that. They're gonna throw hell at us, and we gotta be prepared to take hell. But, um, if, if we are prepared, if we've worked to build solidarity and we're able to, to actually like fight, we're willing to engage in the fight, we're gonna win.
Jonathan Bailey, I'm Fire Breathing Rob. Jonathan, I want to get into a couple more questions before we get into the audience questions. My thing is, obviously, and I want to get back into, because we did talk a lot, a lot of Amazon there, I do want to get into your race back again, uh, and then we'll go to the audience questions. Getting back into your race, obviously, we know New York City, but every city around the country has had extreme problems with gentrification and housing issues. I mean, we see housing prices going sky high up all over the country. It's really incredible. Uh, you know, I don't know how people are affording houses right now. And obviously, we have the eviction crisis coming up, and it's already probably started in some places in the country, where in June, there's gonna be tons and tons of people evicted out of their houses. So my question to you, Jonathan, is what is your stance on? And how are you gonna, um, figure out the gentrification issues in New York City? How are you gonna work to kind of get that, I guess, curb it? And also, as far as housing goes, uh, how are you gonna help as far as housing goes? Because housing is sky high all over the country.
Uh, what I was saying is, uh, in order to, in order to win, um, what we have to be doing is building new working class institutions that we can leverage as a source of political power for, for change. Um, so for here, in, in our district, what that looks like is we need to revitalize the power that exists within, uh, within like public housing, within like our Section 9 rights. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I know. Yeah, I, I. Yeah, I, I. Yeah, I know. Yeah. I, I appreciate you, you looking out for me. No, I, I appreciate you looking out for me.
Like that shit, that shit.
Yeah, I know. No, I. Yeah, I, I appreciate you looking out for me. Um, it's, it's good though. It's good. Like, I mean, I had a couple of likes. It's good. Thank you. I appreciate it. Take it easy, man. Yeah. Um, I'm sorry. Uh, uh, there, uh, earlier, um, somebody, so like, there's a lot of people struggling right now. Like housing is crazy right now. Um, uh, like, yeah, like everything from like everybody struggling with rent, uh, to issues here with like, you know, government is completely abandoned public housing here. Um, I'm actually out here like in Ravenswood, uh, tonight. Um, and, um, but like just doing some canvassing. And somebody, like the first time I lost you, somebody was, uh, coming by, uh, you know, just, because they, they, you know, were asking just for like some cash. Then somebody came by to tell me, don't give anybody cash, you know? Which like, people are like struggling like mad, and it's creating all of these crazy conflicts. Like, people struggling, so they like feel like they have to ask for money. And then like, people like feel unsafe because of like a lot of, like, there's been an increase of violence because of like how hard it is for people to survive, to just, just survive, just to subsist. And so it's creating like more, uh, conflict within our communities. And so like, I mean, you know, I can go from having like somebody asking for money and like, it like, even if I give, give them money, like, and people won't be like happy because like, you know, people feel like, oh, that's encouraging that behavior, right? It encourages like folks for homeless to come around and be like, to be bugging us or harassing us. So it, it like, it makes us all be at war with each other, you know? So like, shit's real. I was just gonna say, our, how we're gonna win housing issues is like, is going to be through like the same thing that we have to do. We need to build new, uh, working class institutions. And for us here, that starts with revitalizing, uh, Section 9 rights. So what a lot of people don't know, uh, is a part of public housing, uh, you know, what, what actually like, you know, leftist, uh, like socialist, but as, as well as like CPUSA, like back, way back in the early 1900s when the US Communist Party was like strong. Like, uh, one of the things that folks fought for was, uh, public housing and for the right to democratic control over the neighborhood. It's like one of the most beautiful things that leftists have won. Uh, I, I think, in my opinion, it's one of the most beautiful things that leftists have won in US history. Um, but like those rights have been eroded, right? Um, over, over decades, um, uh, we've lost access to a lot of those rights. Um, uh, like, you know, instead of acknowledging resident councils as a like, a, a legal entity that we, we can exercise like power over, right? That we have, uh, you know, that, that right. Um, you know, people have called them tenants' unions, right? To erode their legal significance. Um, and you know, uh, like Nisha's, like, uh, you know, public housing area is like falling into disrepair because like, you know, government takes the attitude of like, you know, Queensbridge, the largest public housing, uh, within the US, sits right on the river. Um, it's a beautiful piece of land. And, you know, the government's attitude is, hey, all y'all, time to get out, you know? We need you to move along now. Um, you know, it's, it's mostly like working class or like black folks, you know? And, you know, it's an up and coming area with like lots of developments, right? It's like, hey. You know, the attitude is that it's time to, uh, to, to generate profit off of it. And so, um, you know, there's just been this deep erosion of like, uh, working class power within, uh, public housing. So first, we gotta revitalize, uh, the strength of our resident councils. For Queensbridge, where, uh, Nisha has ousted the resident council in violation of people's Section 9 rights, we gotta win it back. Um, we gotta make sure that those rights are being upheld. So that's, that's the first step, because that will give us a source of power to, uh, leverage for the future, regardless of whoever is in office. Because like, regardless of whether we win or not, what we really want is the working class to be able to hold the power to create changes. Um, uh, so that, that's step one. Step two is we gotta actually, um, we gotta institute a anti-warehouse. we got to institute a, uh, anti warehousing tax. Sixty percent of new building in this area is sitting empty. It's just sitting there empty, right? Um, a ware, anti warehousing tax would tax those empty buildings at a higher rate and, uh, in, in, you know, incentivize, um, uh, uh, you know, real estate developers and large landlords to rent it at a price that working class people can afford. That would enable us to get more people off the street into, in a roof over their head. Um, it would, uh, stop us from, right now, like we just, you know, we funnel, we funnel five times the amount of money into the hands of hotel owners than we spend on all of public housing in New York City, all six hundred thousand people in public housing combined, right? Five times as much as going to those hotels. So like, we need a different strategy. We need to get, uh, roofs over people's head in a real way. And I feel very strongly that an anti warehousing tax is a way to help us do that. But i- it goes a step further. It also ensures that, uh, that, um, there's more housing being pushed into like the, the, kind of the same class of housing for, for working class folks. And so it'll have an effect on all of our rents. Um, and by extension of that, also every, but every owner occupants, it's going to have an effect upon, uh, the tax that they're paying. That's how we can make sure that we're taking care of, uh, people's needs of subsistence. It, it's, it's one of the biggest, most important things that we have to do.
Jonathan for Queens dot com, Jonathan Bailey, City Council District twenty-six in Queens, New York. Jonathan, as we wind our way down, uh, we talked about issues that are extremely important to you and also the Queens community. With that said, uh, you know, I'm sure there's a couple people running against you. We're not trying to do an attack ad here, but what is the difference between you and your opponents as we end the interview?
Well, I think the difference between them and me i- is that like, I mean, I'm the only person that has, uh, well, there's a lot of differences. Actually, there's a lot of differences. One, I like, you know, as a part of, uh, Ocasio twenty eighteen, I'm like Ocasio twenty eighteen alum. I like, you know, fought Joe Crowley when like others wouldn't. Um, so like, one, they're like, like demonstration of like political sentiment that is, is there not because of like the, the playing field, but because of what I believe in. Um, uh, two, like I actually have experienced like within like working class, uh, like struggles, like, you know? I've fought a billionaire. I've won, I've helped, I've been a part of like winning millions of dollars for workers. Um, that experience is, is categorically different than like, uh, experience in a nonprofit. But I, I've been a part of a nonprofit too. I have like program management experience back before I ended up working at Amazon, you know? I, I know what that,
Well, there's a difference, and I'm, I'm going to interrupt you there because I, I want to say the difference here. The difference is between the people that you're running against is these people are a lot of, uh, you know, white collar people. They've, you know, might have done a few good things, you know, as far as working with the community. But you're in the fight for unionization, you're in the fight for labor rights, you're in the fight for housing rights. You're working at Amazon and running for office. You know, we talk about, and you spoke about, I should say, A O C running as a waitress and, you know, also running for Congress and her victory and what it meant to work and people in general. So your fight is the people that in the working class, that's our fight too. So people that are in the working class that are listening to this podcast should either volunteer if you can, if you're in New York, if you're on the internet, throw them a couple of bucks to help them out. I mean, this is a person.
If you're on the internet, if you're on the internet, like totally come through our phone banks, like, you know, um, like even if what you're doing is talking about, uh, you know, the elected civilian review board, our campaign for, uh, um, you know, police accountability. If we win that here in New York City, it'll be a big deal for us nationally. It'll, it'll be, it'll be hallmark legislation. And like, you can be a part of like helping bring that, uh, to New York City to set a standard for, um, for cities across the U S. Um, yeah, if you see this, like come through. We got to build a, a movement of working class people all over the world if we want to make the wins that we want to see, you know? So yeah, yeah, come through.
No, I, I agree. And this is a person again, lastly, and I'm, this is the last thing I'm going to say about it, is a working person, he's not a millionaire, he's not a billionaire. Please help him out. If you go to Jonathan for Queens, J O N A T H A N for F O R Q U E E N S. I almost struggled with that, dot com. I definitely check them out. Again, the phone banking, like you said, you could donate for a couple of bucks. I know everybody's struggling right now, but if you can throw even, you know, five bucks, even with three bucks, whatever it may be, just to help them out, we need more people that are, especially young people in office right now because they are going through the same struggles. And I know the people that I'm listening, yes, I'm talking to you because you are also young, just like Jonathan and myself, and you know the struggles that people are going through right now as far as, you know, not having enough money for rent, for food, for gasoline, which is up past three dollars a gallon right now. It's, it's really out of, out of control right now.